Hey.
Has this always been here in my husband's? Not in the conversation? So he gets like, it kinda works. And I go, y'all have to do it. And I said, just stop. Stop. He cannot. I was like, nobody was talking to me. Oh, he couldn't help himself. So very. That is. It's the best and it's a great time to get.
That is so funny. But not in his.
So do I. Yeah. So do I. So she inserted.
That's.
Okay, so. That's what I heard. The we are a hot. You should see us get off. It is an absolute chaotic. So and then then Bella. She's. I didn't know that. Okay. So listen to this. Gabe. First two weeks.
I got power for you.
I do not know. I don't know.
You sound like Jane.
Oh, that's her dad Charlie. Okay. In my very first.
My phone is like. I have turned everything down. I've turned everything off.
It's a lot smaller, but we wanted to downsize. I know it's too much.
I'm gonna be honest. He was earlier, but don't. He, you're right. Let us see he's out.
Okay, this is not my business, but why? Yeah, yes, you can. There's other stuff.
How you do it?
That way you do with your phone. Yes. Oh, yeah. Have fun with that. There's a treasure. And let me say, let me, let me tell you something. She's in good shape. Basically, she may have been there twenty years. Okay, Mr. Guy. Well, is she probably, you know, probably asked her would she, she was wanting to be. Emily, yes. Well, I don't know her name, but she knows that doesn't sell themselves. Help me remember her. I would just make that number one and number two. I remember you saying. Sir. I always had. I've never had. It's not ever. For the record. Well. Corina, Corina don't care. She's a team player. I can't speak good. Oh. We all go to Lake Charles. Who's gonna Lake Charles?
It's not power. But when I start, I have to like constantly. I can't.
Wouldn't I? I think it is more than this. I think Gabe's just. Do early bird and all that. Oh, the hell. I beat him. I'm so because of the like. And then hit me in the life. I'm so happy. I'm so proud. That'll be the best I've been doing in my life. I saw Latisha. I looked, I just looked at her. Still. It was a lot to read on the days.
So it'll be, it'll be two and a half. That's four. It'll have to be five of one. Yeah. Six of eight.
All right, it's five o'clock. The board meeting for the Vols Paris School Board for Tuesday, February eighteenth will now come to order. We'll start with a prayer by Mr. Dexter and a pledge by Mr. Jay Caligari. Please stand.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the grace and mercy that you've extended to us and the blessings that you continually provide for us. We're thankful for this school system and all the stakeholders. Now, Lord God, as we strive to continuously improve, we pray that you would give us the strength, the wisdom, and all that's needed to reach that goal. Lord, we ask your continued guidance and blessings, and may the decisions and discussions that take place on tonight be, first of all, pleasing for you, pleasing to you, glorified to you, and best serve those within this system. We ask all these blessings now in the name of Jesus we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one. Recommendation to approve the adoption of the minutes of the regular board meeting held Tuesday, January. What date was that?
Is it eighteen? I think so. Yeah, I'm looking.
The eighteen.
Twenty first.
Twenty first.
Twenty first.
Got a motion by Mr. Jay and a second by Mr. Robin to approve the adoption of the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Adoption. Passes. Item number two, recognition of student of the month for January two thousand twenty-five. Superintendent Senate.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight.
We are always excited when we get to honor our students and our faculty, and we've got quite a few, quite a few good things we want to talk about tonight. So the first thing we always do is our student of the month. And we do that by school, and we will start with Bella and Mr. Creep.
Mr. Jacob Laurel. Mr. Jacob is a fifth grader at Bunkie Elementary Learning Academy. His teachers are Ms. Doche and Ms. Phyllis Morris. His favorite subjects are math and social science. Academic accomplishments include honor roll every nine weeks for the first three years in a row, scored advanced or mastery in all subjects tested in since third grade. Academic achievement awards in ELA, science and social studies every year. Member of Beta Four H, and I attended the Life Christian Church in Alexandria, Louisiana. Hobbies include playing baseball, soccer, football, and I'm the champ in the video game Rainbow Six Siege. I absolutely love riding my bike and my four wheeler. Future plans are, I have made a, I haven't made a decision on what I'd like to do yet, but I do have a lot of plans for when I get older. I am thinking of becoming a doctor, but that plan is not set in stone. Congratulations.
Mr. Jay Cockford Elementary.
Leila Sheets.
Okay. Then we will move on to art. Mr. Leon.
We have Eli Doza.
Okay, so we will come back to you when you get here. You just make sure we don't miss them. Um, Ms. Amy Marksville Elementary.
Salem Harold. Salem is in the sixth grade at Marksville Elementary. His favorite subject is science. At a young age, Salem was diagnosed with having a tongue tie that's affected his speech and ultimately his schoolwork. With help from teachers and therapy, he was able to overcome this and has received A and A B honor roll many, many times throughout his time at Marksville Elementary. His hobbies include bass fishing. Nothing excites him more than landing a big bass. He also enjoys deer hunting, football, and of course, playing some video games with friends. His future plans, he's not quite sure what he plans to do in the future just yet, but he loves outdoors and could possibly see himself pursuing a career as a marine biologist. Congratulations, Salem.
Um, okay, Mr. Ricky, you have Plosheville.
Student of the month for Plosheville, Kyle Lemoine. Kyle is in the first grade, teaches Ms. Morgan. Favorite subjects, math, academic achievements. Went from strategic below level on beginning of the year dibbles to benchmark on middle of the year dibbles. Went from below to on the, on eye ready reading, middle of the year benchmark. Hobbies, hunting, fishing, riding his four wheeler. Future plans, his future plans are to be a farmer and a game morden. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Ricky, you have Riverside as well.
Riverside student of the month is Ms. Ava Rodriguez. Ava is in second grade. Her teachers are Ms. Victoria and Ms. Yvonne. Favorite subjects, knowledge in social studies, achievement, academic achievements. Ava grew on her dibbles from below benchmark to benchmark. Also, she grew forty-two points on ELA eye ready this year. Her hobbies, Ava likes to color, watch TV, and read her pop-up books. Her future plans, Ava wants to go to college and become a veterinarian. Congratulations, Ava.
Um, Avast Austin.
Cheyenne Dixon. Cheyenne is in the tenth grade. Her teachers are Ms. Lauren, Mr. Ryan, Coach Ryan, Ms. Alicia, and Ms. Courtney. Her favorite subject is history. Uh, her activities include, she enjoys doing the marching band and being on the principal's list. Her hobbies are crocheting. Her future plans is she plans to go to Northwestern and end up with a master's degree in social work. Congratulations, Cheyenne.
Um, Ms. Jill Bunky Magnet.
Bucky High School student of the month is Sebastian Hernandez. Sebastian's teachers are, uh, not sure what this says, but, uh, let's see, Mr. Lance, Mr. Murphy. Coach Fontno and. Coach Rob. Sorry, Coach Rob. Favorite subjects, ELA and JAG. Academic achievements, A honor roll. Hobbies include football with my brother, cooking, gaming, and working. Future plans, attend CLTCC to get a HVAC certification, then finish out my last two years at LSU A to get my bachelor's degree. Congratulations, Sebastian.
Um, Mr. Robin, you have LaSass.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Savian Baptiste.
Look, your comment is perfect.
Savian is an eleventh grader at LaSass. His teachers are Mr. Ward, Ms. Ledoux, Ms. Humble, Mr. George, Ms. Green, Ms. Dupont, and Ms. Parker. His favorite subjects are history, English, math, and math. His accomplishments are, he passed last year's leap test. He was student of the month. He scored good on his benchmark test. His hobbies are basketball, cooking, raising dogs, and working out, and boxing. His future plans, he wants to open his own restaurant, become a professional boxer, and spread my uplifting music across the globe. Congratulations, Sebastian.
And Ms. Latisha, you have Marksville.
Yes, Marksville High School student of the month is Madison Cooper. Madison is in the eighth grade. Her teachers are Mr. Devon Davis and Jasmine Williams. Her favorite subjects are math and ELA. Her academic achievements, she is an FFA, and she loves being an FFA. It has shown her that she has much, uh, to do and that she's planning to become an FFA officer and go to competitions and try to win. Her hobby is participating in FFA, and she plans to join weightlifting. Her future plans, go to nursing school, work as a nurse in home health, have a house, and have a good and successful life. Congratulations.
Anybody come in the door? Okay, well, then we might come back to one more in a few minutes. All right.
All right. Moving on, item number three, recognition of teacher of the month for January two thousand twenty-five, Ms. Toots.
Good evening, everyone. And we'll begin with Bunkie Elementary Learning Academy, Ms. Connor DeColi. Congratulations. High Court Elementary, Ms. Linda Parkinson. LaCord Elementary, Ms. Lisa Russell. Marksville Elementary, Ms. Gabri Williams. Marksfield Elementary, Ms. Gabri Williams. Clocheville Elementary, Mr. Ty Wagner. Riverside Elementary, Ms. Decoria Williams. Avolz High School, Bailey Gochet. Bunky Magnet High School, Ms. Sabrina Washington. LaSass, Ms. Tanya Gochet. All right, Marksfield High, Mr. Judge Dupree.
Okay, we have Mr. Eli Dozart. He's in the fourth grade. His teachers are Ms. Kelly, Ms. Olivia, and Ms. Stephanie. His favorite subject is science. His academic achievements include that he's very proud to be overall Student of the Month. His hobbies include hunting, fishing, riding his bike, basketball. His future plans is either to be a miner, an architect, or a carpenter. Congratulations Eli.
All right, item number four. Recognition of 2025 Outstanding School Support Employee. Ms. Amy?
Hi, good evening. I get the pleasure of introducing our Outstanding School Support Employees for the year. We have one employee chosen per school, and then we have district winners. So we'll have an elementary district winner, a middle school district winner, a high school district winner, and then a central office winner. So if you'll come to the front when I call your name. For Bunky Elementary, we have Mr. Ronald Dupont. He's a custodian.
And y'all get to just stand up here listening.
Okay, from Conport Elementary, Ms. Sherlene Roy. She's a paraprofessional. All right, from LaFargue Elementary, Ms. Annie Tyler. She's a paraprofessional. Marksfield Elementary, Ms. April Brown. Paraprofessional. Clocheville Elementary, Mr. Randy Bardwell. Paraprofessional. And for Riverside Elementary, Ms. Constance Jones. Secretary. Okay, that's in the elementary division. Our district winner is Ms. April Brown from Marksfield Elementary.
Big smiles, look at that while y'all get one.
Okay, and then the high school division, Avolz High School, Ms. Rosalyn Barnes. Financial Secretary. Bunky High School, Jordan Jackson. Paraprofessional.
His own chair inspection.
From LaSass, Heather Dozart. Secretary. Okay, Marksfield High School, Ms. Lydia Neal. Paraprofessional. And from AVA, Ms. Sheila Humphries. Secretary. And then in our high school division, our middle school high school division, our district winner is Ms. Sheila Humphries from AVA. Okay, and then we have one more to recognize. Here at the central office, our support employee of the year. So she represents the central office and she's the district winner for the central office. Ms. Stacy Bordel, the superintendent secretary.
She's why we have class every month.
She's why we have a lot of things. She deserves that check, she has to tolerate us.
So we're gonna ask you to be patient with us one more minute. Another set of awards.
Yep. Item number five is recognition of differentiated compensation awards.
Good, so these people are here and they don't really know why they're here, which is really exciting to us because we tried hard to keep this a secret. But probably a little over a year ago, we got this pot of money from the state and the state gave us parameters as to how we could, what we could do with it. And the board so graciously worked with us to come up with a good plan where we could really put our money where our mouth was. So about three years ago, we really started focusing on student mastery, right? Grade level learning in the grade area, standard, safe, grade level learning. And so if you were at our January opening session, we talked about, we talked about mastery across the board. We talked about mastery in every building that maintained or improved because we know even a half a percent is more mastery than we had before, right? Tonight, you're gonna get to meet, I think it's nineteen teachers who can give checks. So we're really excited about the big checks. Principals, and I haven't even told you how much they are yet. I'm gonna tell you before principals give you big checks. Y'all didn't know that, right? Thirty-five hundred dollars stay. We are so excited to be able to give you, like we literally gave the check. And then across the bottom, we put, this is not a check. Well, we also have little checks that are basically paid to us. So Ms. Gochet has a list and we're gonna do this by building because we know this is a team effort, right? It takes all of us. But it's really exciting to be able to say thank you to you because you increased mastery five percent or more. Okay, so I want you to think about that a minute. We, we know, we talked about, I think Riverside raised theirs across the school at six percent. I think Bunky raised theirs at five percent. No, Clocheville, five percent. Bunky, four percent. I know Sharice got three percent. So we know every percentage point counts. So these nineteen people you're gonna honor tonight with us raised their mastery this previous school year five percent or more. And there were other pieces of the criteria and there were state pieces that played into that, which is really, really exciting because those damn scores made a difference. The, the work you're doing in your building makes a difference. So with all of that said, let me get you those big, oh, big checks. So which building you wanna start with?
Let's start with Bunky Elementary. But before I do, since this was a surprise for everyone, my offense, all your names, is ten percent.
So I do, I probably shouldn't say at this point before we give you this check, we got another pot of money from the state for this current year. It's not as much as we got last year and the goal is to have more. So you really are the inaugural group and you probably will get the biggest check across the board. But this is something that we, we are excited to be able to continue doing if the state will continue to give you this pot of money.
All right. Bunky Elementary Learning Academy, I think they should've come up. Before I call the name, you should have drumroll. Ms. Patricia Richey.
So let me, let me interject real quick. Do not get rid of those big checks because some people aren't here tonight. They're at Beta Convention and stuff. So I'll be coming to your schools to do some more and, and we'd like to have those checks in the picture again. Hang on to them.
All right, LaFargue Elementary, Ms. Stephanie Bordel.
Congratulations.
Oh, you wanna call them all at once? Okay, all right. All right, Ms. Casey Dupree. And Ms. Calagino. Marksfield Elementary, Ms. Pam LeBourne. All right. Clocheville, Clocheville Elementary, Mrs. Zilia Clark. And Ms. Sarah Gilroy. All right, Bunky Magnet High School. All right, Ms. Rhonda Andrews.
That's what I'm talking about.
Ms. McKenzie Andrews?
Congratulations.
Ms. Doris Leary?
Forty-eight years teaching.
All right, Ms. Deborah LeBlanc?
You go girl.
That's what she says every time. This is Dan Murphy. Ms. Abigail Turner.
Congrats, Ms. Leary.
And Ms. Liz Willis. Ms. TikTok Sensation. Les Bass, Ms. Karen Zale. She is leaving to go to Beta Convention after tonight.
Good choice.
That's my heart, too. And Ms. Katie Green. All right, Riverside Elementary, Ms. Saria Allen.
It's a team effort. My assistant principal, come on up. This is a team. We've been staying together over here.
He's giving checks ahead, he said. All right, uh, Ms. Amber Bordlon. And Ms. Sharon. Thank y'all so much for endorsing us tonight. We are so excited to, to be able to give this information and pull this together, and we are thrilled to be able to make those presentations. And I just wanna say one more time, um, for everybody that's here, thank you so much for what you do in our schools. We appreciate it and it's making a difference. Um, Ms. Amy is gonna take our People of the Month, and we still have more pictures to take. Our People of the Month to the back, and we're gonna take those, those pictures, people who got big checks. She's gonna come to your school, so keep those checks kinda handy because we've got people at Beta Convention, we've got people kind of scattered. We wanna do big shots of everybody at one time. Um, and I think that's it. The Four People of the Year, we got two already. Good. All right, so if you're following Ms. Amy to the back, we thank you so much for being here.
Deborah. 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 Mike Carlos, they are precious. Beautiful family. Congrats, Casey. Congrats, girl.
Congratulations.
You, very deserving.
Congratulations. That's okay. That's all right.
You haven't gone to there? We haven't done that yet.
Once we get to that item, it'll be great. That's how we, that's how we normally do it.
Everybody can come sit up front now.
He wants to go. There's nothing.
Bunkie's a great place to take him. That's a good place to take him. It's a great vacation, that's right. It's a great vacation spot. Everybody loves him.
Boy, they love him.
I know, everybody loves him. It's precious. I thought he played basketball and every day he was all involved. Pay with the braces and stuff now, do it now. Sounds good, have fun at Bunkie. Bunkie's great. Go spend some money there, too.
I told him, I said, "You better keep working." He'll never leave with that momma at home. It took me fourteen years.
Stay with her there until the state is this far out.
Fourteen years.
Oh, look, she, she's waiting on you.
You think you love them, but you can live with them all the time.
Don't look like I'll be working till I'm eighty-nine, eighty-one. Hopefully, hopefully.
All right, moving on. Item number six. This is, uh, information items only, no action required. Item number six, First Cajun Crossroads Classic evolves special education students crossing the finish line one hurdle at a time. Ms. Dawn.
Ms. Dawn.
She's stealing all of the big checks.
I am, I'm so happy for them.
So, um, we're gonna have our first, um, Cajun Crossroads, oh gosh, Cajun Crossroads Classic. And it's gonna be our own version of Special Olympics. It's gonna be open to all students with disabilities. Um, you know, whether they qualify for APE or not, it doesn't matter. Um, the only, um, the only thing is you can't come, of course, if you've been expelled. Um, but it's open to everybody else, we're not charging a fee. Um, Markville High has graciously let us use their track field. So we're gonna do it on March twenty-sixth, and, um, we're looking to have a great time with our kiddos. We separated it into two sections. Um, we're gonna let our, our kids in grades three to six come in the morning, and then our kids of seven to twelve come in the afternoon. Um, we're collecting donations now, we're doing it through a QR code, and of course, through checks. We're hoping to raise enough money so that every child gets a free T-shirt at least. Um, but other than that, we're gonna, we're gonna give awards and, um, that kind of stuff to our students. So, um, this is my seventh year as supervisor, and we've never done this, and I know it wasn't done, uh, before me. So I don't, I don't know when the last time we even had this in the district. So we're very, very excited to do this for our kids. So we're getting lots of questions and calls, we're trying to field them as they come, but it is open to every child with a disability in our district.
That's fantastic. Do you have a QR code that you could share with this, or?
Uh, yes, actually, it's on Facebook. And, um.
We'll put it in the newsletter.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We'll put it in the newsletter, and I, I don't know, Ms. Amy's not here, but. Oh, and it's on the website, on our website as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawn.
Will students be allowed to attend, or are they helping? Do y'all have some of the organizations helping, athletic?
Yes, so, um, Ms. Jennifer Harper, um, is our, um, APE teacher, and she's gonna have some of her track students help. We, we're waiting to get our numbers in. Uh, the numbers were due to me today. Today, tomorrow. Uh, the numbers are due to me tomorrow, so depending on how many, uh, children sign up, um, I've been doing this a while. So I know we, sometimes we have to send a second push home, and I ask teachers to please, you know, don't let the kids not come because mom didn't get the note out the book sack. Make it a second attempt, call mom, you know, just make a second attempt. Because I don't want any kids not to come because mom didn't see the letter. So, um, it depends how many kids we get, then we'll see how many, um, you know, if we have to ask the Beta Club or some of the. For now, we know we have the track team, um, helping out, and, um, we have our people appraisal, uh, people housed at people appraisal who are gonna help out. So.
Are we gonna allow students to go?
So, um, no, ma'am, only because, um, it's a, for me, it's a, um, it's a, it's a lot. And it's my first time, and managing small children with disabilities is a whole lot. So for this first year, I just wanna focus on the children with disabilities and managing them. As, as the years progress, maybe we can see, but this is our field test, this is our first year. I don't want, you know, safety is my, is my main concern. So, uh, I told everybody, we're gonna bite, we're gonna eat this elephant one bite at a time, and my goal is to have the kids get off the bus and get back on the bus with an award, and have a good time in between. So I don't wanna make it too big because, uh, again, safety, 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 safety. And, and I don't know if that's the right answer or not, but it, it's just a management thing for me.
Anybody else got anything?
What would be the time of this evening?
So we're asking the kids to get there sharp, eight-thirty, the, the teachers, like, we timed it out, and we have to, like, start eight-thirty on the dot so that they can be on the bus, gone at eleven. And our high schoolers will come at twelve-thirty, and they'll be gone at three.
They'll eat at their home school.
Right, so we didn't even wanna, um, fool with, we thought a bag lunch and that kind of stuff, but we're, again, we thought, okay, that's another management, that's another piece, that's another thing to deal with. So, um, you know, some of our students have significant disabilities, uh, you know, so it's, you know, we have almost seven hundred, um, children with disabilities in our parish, so that's a lot of kids. So I'm just, I wanna keep it on a small scale to start off with, and next year, we can, we'll, we can grow from there.
And, and I just wanna add one more piece to that. You know, years ago, whenever we made that decision to, uh, renovate these tracks in this parish, the nine of us got a lot of flak for that. But in doing so, it was, it was able to bring about things like this.
Correct, perfect.
So I'm, I'm glad that was able to happen, but this, this is much needed.
Exactly. Even our kids with our most severe disabilities will be able to participate in the four-hundred meter walk. So everyone's gonna be able to do something.
Anybody else got anything?
Thank you, Ms. Dawn.
Thank you, Ms. Dawn. Item number seven, Transition Fair for Special Education. Is no one, you also?
So, um, this is something that we do, and we have been doing for years. Um, it happens once a year. We ask for various members around, uh, various agencies around the community to come. Um, LRS comes, uh, we've got different agencies that come, and, um, it's to help with, um, our children who are about to grad, well, I'm not gonna say about to graduate, ages sixteen and up come. And, um, their parents are welcome to attend as well, and there's lots of informational pamphlets, brochures, and they speak to these agencies about post-secondary employment and about, um, options for students after graduation. So that's gonna be held on, um, I believe it's March nineteenth at the LSU Ag Center.
Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawn.
All right, thank you.
Item number eight, Media Blast, Ms. Thelma.
All right, um, of alls parish, we're going to do a media ba, uh, blast for advertising, teacher recruitment, employees. So beginning in March, what we're going to do, we're going to advertise, we wanna do something big. So Ms. Amy Valentine is going to help me with this, and in March, we're going to advertise for support personnel, uh, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, custodians, food service technicians, school nurses, and, um, school secretaries. So we wanted to do a big push for that. In the month of April, we're gonna send out flyers to universities announcing teacher vacancies. Uh, we're going to post flyers on the district's social media platform, the dis, and we're going to, uh, have the district commercials. We did a little editing for some of them, but, uh, we wanna, um, have those advertised again, and we're going to appear, some of us are going to appear on the noonday, uh, jambalaya. And in the month of May, it is tentative right now because I don't have a location. We wanna try and do something off, uh, off campus. We wanna have a teacher recruitment date. We don't wanna call it Teacher Job Fair. We wanna have a teacher recruitment date. So the tentative date is May fifth, and once I can find a location and everything, I will let you all know.
Thank you, Ms. Dawn. Anybody got anything?
Item number nine, presentation of the fiscal year twenty-four audit report.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Doug Burke, I'm with the Firm of Cold or Slave Inning Company. We're the audit firm that was selected to perform the audit for the school district for the year ending two thousand and twenty-four, June thirtieth. Uh, what I wanna do tonight is you, we put together a small presentation for you. Uh, I'm not gonna go through the entire presentation. What I'd like to do is look at the page number one, which has highlights of the pertinent sections of the report. When you start to dig into your financial statements, it's, it's almost a hundred and forty-page document. Uh, there's a lot of information, a lot of good information that's prepared by the finance department, and I, I encourage everyone, especially the board members, to take some time and, and kind of peruse it and, and see all the activities that are going on. You see it every day, you're in the weeds, as I say, uh, but when you start to look, and you look at the numbers, and you look at those, all the different activities, then it can be an eye-opener for you. Page number one, what we've done is we've broken down the report on key areas as an auditor that we focus in on. And, uh, one item I, I put at the very top of the list is the management discussion and analysis. It's the very first section of the report. This is a report that's prepared by management. Ms. Karen and her staff, the finance staff and others pulled all this information together. Uh, I encourage you to, to read that section of the report. Uh, it really gives you an idea of where you've been. Like I said, you lived it, but when you start to read it and you, and you go back to it, you, you start saying, "Oh, yeah, I remember when that happened." Or I understand what's going on now. So, I encourage you to read that section if that's the only one that you can get to. In that section, there is a copy of the district's certificate that they were awarded for financial reporting in 2023. The way that works is that this financial statement for 2024 will be submitted for review and analysis to the GFO, the Governmental Finance Officers Association. And they're gonna, they're gonna look at it and look at their guidance and see if the report adheres to their standards. And if they do, you get the certificate. It's a very rare, with all the clients that we deal with throughout Central and Southern Louisiana, getting that certificate is an honor. And I know that's something that the board has encouraged the staff to do, to follow the standards, follow all the rules, get everything in place. And I know they've been successful throughout the years in doing that. They were successful in 2023. There's no guarantees, but I feel confident that they're gonna be successful in 2024. So, that should give you an additional level as the policy setters that the financial reports are being prepared properly, they're fairly stated, and that they're giving you the correct information. And on another note, financial statements that are prepared on that level become a reference tool. And I know for a fact, we have other agencies that refer to the school board's report about getting information about Evols Parish because there's a lot of information in the report. The first area where we get involved is the independent auditors report. That's in the very first section. It's right after the analysis that I just spoke about. It's a three-page letter. It starts on page 1 of your report. And basically, when you read through the letter, you'll see where it describes management's responsibility. And when I say management, the leader is Ms. Karen as superintendent and everybody underneath her, all the way down to the custodians in the schools. Everybody is responsible for following processes, following procedures, and making sure these financial statements can get prepared properly and in accordance to the standards. So, management's responsible for doing that, making sure that takes place. We, as auditors, come in, we make an assessment, we do testing, we do different techniques, and then we give you an opinion. I'm happy to say, because of the joyful atmosphere that we've had tonight, that the district's gonna receive an unmodified opinion on their financial statements for 2024. So, that means your financial statements are put together, they're not materially misstated, they get to the point, they tell the reader of the financial statement, which could be a legislative auditor, could be your bondholders, could be a citizen who can get a copy of your statements. It tells them that the report is prepared properly and in accordance with all the standards. That's the gold standard of opinions. The second area that we get involved in is way in the back of the report. It's like on page 135. This is where we do special testing called the single audit testing. Because y'all receive so much federal funding, y'all are subject to additional testing from the federal government. And it's always been that way. Y'all are heavily involved with federal programs. So, y'all are subject to single audit every year. The programs might rotate, but you're always subject to single audits. Again, when you read that report, it's gonna tell you the same information. Management, Ms. Karen and her staff are responsible for making sure that rules and regulations are followed from the federal government, that they've spent the money properly, it's been spent on allowable things, it's been spent in time, there's time restrictions, there's all kinds of things that you gotta look at. And we issue an opinion, and that opinion goes to the federal government. And again, I'm happy to say, we found no compliance issues. The two major programs that we focused on this year was the child nutrition cluster because you got a number of programs that fall underneath that, and the special education cluster, which you have a number of programs. So, we did testing based on the rules and regulations. And we didn't come up with any compliance issues. We didn't come up with any internal control issues, which is another important area. Shows that things are being handled properly, signatures are there, reviews are there, reporting is done. So, again, you're gonna receive an unmodified opinion on that portion of the report. Okay? And then the last area we focus in on is internal controls. Now, this is handled a little differently. According to our standards, we need to assess, anytime we go and do an audit, we have to assess the internal controls, how things are doing, how the system is going. Because it's a living, breathing thing. It can change from day to day, it can change from week to week, year to year. So, we go in and make an assessment of that to decide how we're gonna do our audits. We don't issue an opinion. We don't tell you it's great or it's terrible. We don't do that because we don't do enough work to be able to do that. But when we gather that information, look at some things, talk to people, because I know a lot of times people are like, why are you asking me all these questions? Well, that's part of the process. And we ask all the way up to the superintendent, all the way down to the accounting clerk in the central office. We have discussions with everybody. So, we don't issue an opinion, but our standards tell us if we see something, we have to say something. That's kind of, I'm happy to report that during our processes and our assessments, we didn't see anything. Now, is there, is everything hunky-dory and there's no problems? I can't tell you that tonight. We never can. You know, we'd have to look at every transaction that went through your system. But I can tell you, the work that we did, the processes we did, we have nothing to report. So, you have no findings, no compliance findings, and no internal control findings for the system. So, I'm kinda pleased, based on tonight, I'm happy to give you all this good news and not kind of rain on the...
Us too.
Yeah. So, again, there's some financial graphs that are included in this packet. I'm not gonna go over those tonight because I know y'all got a busy agenda. But it gives you a little snapshot, but the real details you'll find in the actual financial report itself. There's a five-year graph that'll show you that for the last five years, including the mid-year, y'all have reported surpluses in your district. Which is, think about the timeframe we're talking about, is a remarkable accomplishment. So, what the future holds, no one knows. But y'all are in a strong financial position going into the next couple of years. Anybody have any questions? I won't take any more of y'all's time.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Great job, finance staff.
Ms. Mary, thank y'all, you and your department. Item number 10, sales tax report for the month of January. Ms. Jessica?
All right, our sales tax collections for January totaled $1,133,450.85. This is the slight decrease to what we had of January 2024, which was about $11,474.63 less. So, it's one percent less than last year. Our motor vehicles, January 2025, we collected $139,681.81, which is a .64% increase compared to last year. And we did not have any audits completed in the month of January. Our fiscal year comparison, our total to date is $6,718,370.17. So, we're running about a half percent behind to '23, '24 right now. And 6.05% increase '24, '25 to '22, '23. Our calendar year to date, we've collected the $1,133,450.85. We only have January so far in this year. So, that's our summary. Any questions? All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. Number 11, monthly maintenance report on expenses. I didn't see anything that I had questions on, if any of y'all have any. Item number 12, monthly general fund, '24, '25 year-to-date report with comparison, Ms. Mary?
Okay, so you'll see through December of '24 compared to December of '23. The balance sheet, yes, that's the first. So, we have a total of $26,736,000 in cash investments compared to last year, And then liabilities and fund balance to go with that. Any questions on the balance sheet? Okay. The next would be the, does that say revenue?
It does.
Okay. So, a few little differences I just wanted to point out. So, if you see a count that says, it's about the fourth line down, "Adverrum 2011." So, last year, though, we just had, that was a timing difference. We had not collected the revenues until January. So, this is through December. Does that kind of scare me? I thought something was miscoded, but it was there, and it'll be there next month. So, not too many other differences that we hadn't looked at before. So...
Go back down one, Ms. Mary. What's the other miscellaneous revenue?
Okay, last year, we had a refund from the bus grant. We had, well, we had paid $900,000 because that was the money that we had received. But then they refunded it because we decided to continue to finance it because the interest rate was like 2%. And the medical, Medicaid reimbursement, that's the Dawn's billing? Yeah, and that varies from year to year. That was something that we got, they'll go back for like three or four years, and then we'll get a lump sum. Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else? And then, so, and then on the other side, so, yeah, that's it. We are about, pretty much even with last year. I don't see any large variances that I didn't, couldn't account for. So, any questions on that? Okay. And the audit report was emailed to y'all. I know y'all usually get a booklet, but we chose to do that this year. So, if y'all wanna mean or ask questions about it, I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Item number 13, personnel changes, Ms. Thelma?
On the personnel list, we just have a few resignations, some new hires. Also, if you notice, Evols High, we have a ROTC instructor. And I know Mr. Compton had been working on that for years. So, we finally did secure someone to take that position.
And he gave me great news today. You wanna tell him really quick what you told me?
So, he has a schedule.
Really fast.
He's based at Evols High. And of course, we're looking at, and they're gonna get the kids from each school out so they can go for next year. So, he started a schedule rotating around to the schools to help the kids who are not know what it's about. So far, he's only been at Evols in March, and he said just they're, the interest is enough to pretty much fill up the program.
Awesome.
That's exciting.
Yes, that is.
Much needed.
And he's such a good guy. And so, we're excited to have him. And the last sheet is the list of subs. I wanted to say tonight, one of the Teacher of the Month, she from Riverside. I didn't wanna embarrass her, I didn't let her, you know, I didn't let her know in advance. I wanted to recognize her, but she was a parent. And so, now she's a teacher in the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Thelma. All right, item number 14 through 19 are gonna be consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve consent items number 14 through 19.
And a second, Ms. Rose.
Got a motion by Ms. Jill and a second by Mr. Lynn to approve the consent items 14 to 19. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent items are approved. Moving on to item number 20, recommendation, these are action items, number 20 and 21. Recommendation to approve updated purchasing manual. Ms. Mary?
Our...
Yeah, it's from Reeve, and if you may have read it, actually, Mr. Jay helped us compile it. And we used some data that we had already in the old manual, and it was kind of updated it. But I think it'll work well.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Germaine.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mr. Robin and a second by Ms. Jill?
And I do wanna, I do wanna say to Jay how much we appreciate his help with this. We, we've been working on this several months now, and we've really condensed it, and we've really streamlined it. And Mary has got this new system in place, and it really is rolling for us. And so, I appreciate your help with that.
Thank you. I think in the long run, it can save, it can save tax dollars for our constituents the way we're doing it, where we can, we will have the choice to do what's best for the district when we make these purchases, and we kind of, that's iterated in the, in the policy itself.
We're excited about it.
Any discussion on it? Any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The recommendation to approve the purchasing manual class? Item number 21, recommendation to approve vella termite treatment for back two buildings. Mr. Rafe?
You know, we came to you last time with the main building. And this will just complete that, for that campus, those back two buildings, which there have been termites in the past. So, the price of this one was $6,492. And I just, that way out, that whole campus will be where we need for it to be.
I'll make a motion to approve that, Ms. Frozen.
Got a motion by Ms. Jill and a second by who?
Ms. Amy.
Ms. Amy? To approve the termite treatment for the back two buildings. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recommendation to approve the termite treatment for the back two buildings, approved. All right. Item number 22, which was listed as executive session, just to give you, it's not an executive session item, and I think we satisfied the question on it too. So, if anybody wants to make a motion to take that, remove that from it?
I'll make a motion that we remove executive session items 22 and 23 for legal purposes.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Ms. Amy and a second by Mr. Robin to remove Agenda Items 22 and 23. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Those two items are removed.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I just wanted, just to make a mention, I voted, obviously, to approve the overnight travel. But we discussed a time or two for either educators or even ourselves to have this information turned into us so we can approve it ahead of time. But I can see we just approved one that they are already scheduled to leave today. And we just approved it. So, maybe we already cut in those checks before we approve this travel?
So, board policy gives me the authority to make those, those, they're not emergencies, but to make those decisions as we need for them to be made. And then we bring them to you so that we can get board approval, to get those pieces paid. Sometimes we get them in time, sometimes we don't. Depends on what the notice is. And you'll have to tell me who's leaving today, and I can give you a little bit of an idea.
Beta, beta.
Oh, okay.
I know it's a need, it's a must, but can we just...
We do our very best. Thelma, you do travel, you wanna talk a minute to that?
So, with this one, they were trying to get everything in line and have all the paperwork done properly. So, it came in this week to be put on the, so, in a sense, it was turning in on time. So, we just approved the day of because of the time of the meeting.
Can I say a little something? I know as a teacher, sending in these things, sometimes you don't know till maybe three or four days before you have a competition what kids will be attending, and they want that list of kids, I guess, on there. And so, sometimes you're fumbling around, and you don't know till two, three days before. You're taking a trip, what to put. So, I think sometimes that becomes a problem.
And then our board meetings are not on the first Tuesday anymore.
That's correct.
And that makes a difference.
The way it failed, it was in on time, but the way it failed, it was just put on the board at this time.
We do our best to do that.
Yeah, I don't think any of us have a problem, especially if the kids are involved.
Yeah, and if you ever have a question about one, you're... Yeah, and if you ever have a question about one, you're welcome to call and ask us because we can usually tell you exactly why it wasn't the month before.
We used to sit here and approve something they had three months before, so.
Yeah, we're trying hard not to do that.
This is good, this is good.
Any more, any more questions?
I'll second that adjournment to you, Dr.
Who uh, made the motion, Jill?
I adjourned, duly seconded.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.